No, I have a key. Anyone with an A B key?
So I got the A B key.
Yeah. Which is temporary. The A B key isn't a master key, but I can at least still.
Lets us come and go out of my door.
I know.
I know, I've got the chairman mic, so I'll help kind of manage some of that as well.
Okay, good evening. Looks like we got everything as ready as it's gonna be here at City Hall, and I hope things are working for you all out in TV land. So without further ado, I will call this meeting of the Manatee Springs City Council to get it to to order. It's a regular meeting of city councils, April 6th, 2021. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. So if you'll stand and join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
City council members, Judith Chandler.
Present.
Okay, I didn't hear.
Judith, we didn't hear you, could you?
I'm present.
Hey, hang on Judith, you're saying you sound really faint here, we're gonna try and tune this while we go.
Yeah, cuz I hear you really loud and clear.
Okay. Judith, could you try it again?
Present.
That sounds good, thank you.
Counselor Jota?
Here.
Counselor Julie Wolf?
Here.
Counselor Steve Bremer. Counselor Susan Woolbrook is absent for the record. Mayor Protem Nancy Fortune.
Present.
And Mayor John Graham.
Present, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. First item of business would be approval of the approval of the agenda, we'd seek a motion approving the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda for April 6th, 2021, as written.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it was a second by Mayor Protem Nancy Fortune.
Okay, we've seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay. Stand by. Minor technical difficulty. Looks like we're getting it resolved. Okay. Next item, then, item E is public comment on non-agenda items. This would be anyone in the public who would like to speak to an issue that is not on tonight's agenda. I don't know if we have anyone.
We do, Mayor, I do see a hand that just went up and it says Sid Nichols.
Okay, we do have one. Before we get started, if you are going to speak, we would ask that you state your name and address. We would like to, if you, we could please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we typically do not respond, that is, we, city council does not respond to remarks made. And and if someone has already made mention of an item, please try not to be too repetitious. Thank you. So I believe Sid Nichols is our first speaker.
Hello, am I on?
Sid, I, yeah, speak again Sid, would you please?
Yeah, hello, hi. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
Oh, well, let me see here. I didn't have an option to add my camera, I just had an option to unmute. Maybe Judy can send me that option? I'd love you all to see me.
When we have public comment, I do not bring them over, their their video over, only their ability to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Nichols, apparently owing to technical constraints, we're just gonna hear you and not see you tonight, but if you're okay with that, roll it.
I am, I dressed up, I did dress up for this. I could have stayed in my my bag sweatshirt. That's quite fine. Anyway, I wanna, first of all, my name is Sid Nichols and I live at 25 Ute Trail here in Manitou. I wanna start out by thanking all of the the council members, the current council, for their dedication and work for the city of Manitou. Coming to talk a little bit about my passion for the community and some things I've seen change over the last few years. Just a little history, my grandparents and parents have been residents of Manitou Springs since the early 1900s. I began living here in 1970, attending school until 1976, and then I moved to Wisconsin in 1982. I returned back to Manitou, which I was always hoping I would do, in 2007. During the time away from Manitou, I've seen it evolve from a community with barber shops, bookstores, banks, hardware stores, markets, shoe repairs, pharmacies, and summer tourism, to now becoming a year-round tourist destination. Over the past year, I've attended most of the council meetings due to COVID and I appreciate the opportunity to join in, and I've seen how most of the dialogue and decisions recently have been around how to manage the year-round tourism. As a resident, I'd like to know what council and city government does that addresses the wellness and quality of life of the residents. I walked from the west end of Manitou Springs to the east end to visit my mom almost daily, and what I observed is a focus on a visitor's experience rather than the resident's experience. Let me state some examples. The one that really prompted me to decide to join in tonight was I was coming back from a walk and came up the creek walk and hit Manitou Avenue, and all of a sudden I saw pay-to-park signs plastered on Manitou Avenue. No kiosks, no instructions, and I would like to know how this new parking plan really benefits residents. I recently saw trees along Becker's Lane removed to make a bigger entrance to the Garden of the Gods. How does this really benefit residents of Manitou? A few years ago, trees along Canyon Avenue were removed with the promise to keep that space green, or at least perhaps add some sort of art. None of that has happened. This was in order to make a 30-foot section of sidewalk accessible. Meanwhile, a library downtown used by many residents remained inaccessible. How do these decisions benefit residents? On my walk, I see roads that need sweeping, potholes getting bigger from Minnehaha down Lover's Lane to Villa Piedras. How does this sort of maintenance of the city benefit residents? I see the east end and the west end getting revitalized, utilities buried during the time I came back a brand-new downtown. How does that really benefit the residents? I hear countless discussions about parking, parking garages, rates for parking, ticket revenue. How does this benefit residents? What I see is the focus has shifted. The focus of the council now favors discussions around how to manage the tourism industry that we've created over the past 20-some years. How does this benefit residents? Manitou Springs presents itself as a wellness.
Mr. Nichols, we do try to keep comments to three minutes or so.
I'm almost, I'm almost done, Mayor Graham.
Wrap it up, that'd be great, thanks.
Yep. Where have there been recent decisions made by council that would truly improve a resident's wellness and quality of life? Meanwhile, residents plant gardens in public spaces, maintain the gardens, clean up trash, create art, build trails, clean the creek, mitigate fire hazards on Bar Trail, play music, provide history, promote culture and wellness. The residents do this with a passion, a passion for the community and a sense of belonging. I would like to see the council have a broader vision and embrace this passion for the resident's quality of life. Perhaps it's time to host a resident meeting to gather ideas on how the city council and government can embrace the same passion residents have, or at least balance it with the decisions of how to improve the visitor's experience and focus solely on tourism. I would be glad to help in any way possible, and I will be glad to furnish any other contact information. I think the fact that council doesn't respond and I'm limited to three minutes really does speak about the focus on residents. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Bravo.
Judy, do we have anyone else who wants to speak?
Mayor, at this time, I don't see any other hands that have been raised on the Zoom meeting, so.
I don't, I don't either. Alright, I guess that was all we had for tonight. Okay, so the next item, item F is consent calendar. Fairly lengthy tonight, we have eight items. Approval of meeting minutes for March 2nd, those are amended minutes, the meeting of March 16th, the 22nd, the 23rd, then we have a grant request for the 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Reappointment of Shannon Solomon and Michael Mayo as regular members of the Open Space Advisory Committee, OSAC, and then the last item, reappointment of Bill Kerner as a regular member of the Transportation and Parking Board. Are there any objections to this? Mayor Protem?
Yes, I would like to pull item F2, March 16th minutes off for a, an amendment. But I will move to approve the rest of the consent calendar as written.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the removal or the exception of item two, the March 16th regular meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, okay, yeah, you got the floor, Julie.
There was something that in the minutes, and I think it was the March 2nd minutes, that I thought was improperly worded, summarizing what our attorney had advised us, and unfortunately, I wrote page eight on my notes cuz I was on the city packet, but now it's not on page eight. So I'll have to find that part, but it was where, anyway, I'd like to pull that off, the March 2nd minutes.
So, okay, so Counselor Wolf requests that we pull March 2nd off for separate consideration. Okay, so we have two items removed. I guess we need a new motion.
Oh yes, it is page six.
I will amend my motion to pull off the March, or F1 as well for an amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the consent calendar with the exceptions of items one and two, which will be considered separately. Do we have a second?
A second.
Yeah, we have a second. So Wolf, Counselor Chandler, okay. All in favor approving the consent calendar as presented with the exception of items one and two, which will be considered separately? All in favor, say aye. Show your hands.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and then consider item F1, this is approval of the amended March 2nd regular meeting minutes. Julie?
Yes. And Jeff, can you pull those up? I'm looking at actually page six, and and it was worded in in a a way that seemed goofy and misleading. It says, "City Attorney Jeff Parker commented that the $2,650 fine is what is authorized by statute for municipal courts for the maximum fine," and then "The city chose 90 days as the maximum jail time." I just, I know what she's saying, but you know, maybe we should say "and/or" up to 90 days in jail or something that that just seemed, do you see that?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it right here, I'm just seeing it now. Sorry, just wanna read the preceding paragraph to get my.
Okay, yeah, I think you were just citing our code and you were just explaining.
Yeah.
Fine and or, but then maybe you said, well, maybe somebody said, "Why 60 days in jail or 90 days in jail?" So that's what we voted or.
The council chose, yeah, maybe it's maybe.
It got spun a little goofy.
Yeah, it might, it might be able to say, you know, "And the city council, the city council chose a maximum jail time of 90 days." That might read a little better.
Well, if you say that, then are you gonna say the city council also chose the $2,650 fine? I mean, we're not.
Yeah, well, I mean, 90 days is actually less than the maximum jail time authorized under statute. And so I guess my point was that the 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 maximum fine is 2,650, and then the actual maximum jail time in the code is 90 days.
So are you saying that, are you saying that the state statute authorizes us as a home rule city to fine only up to 2,650?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But they, and they authorize us to also jail people for more than 90, but we decided to cut it off at 90.
Right.
Oh, well, however you wanna reword that, but I thought that was really kind of confusing and.
Sure, sure, I guess I could, I could propose that, I guess I'd have to see exactly what I said, you know, maybe I did say that and it wasn't clear, so I think the point is, is that the $2,650 is what is what is authorized by state statute for municipal courts for the maximum fine, and the city council selected 90 days as the maximum jail time instead of the one year that is authorized by state statute. Maybe that would.
That makes sense, now that makes sense to me, that would help. So I would propose we add that little last clause of whatever Jeff just said to clarify.
Yeah, I think all you would be adding is the words that, instead of the maximum one year authorized by state statute.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's a little hard without having it in front of us to see what, what we're actually considering, but.
Yeah, and you know, I guess, you know, there's a little issue here too, which is that, you know, I wanna be clear what I meant, but typically when you do minutes, you're supposed to reflect what the person said, even if it wasn't very accurate, so I mean, I'd like to clarify, that's what I meant, but I'm not sure what I actually said that on that day, but that's certainly what I did mean.
Yeah, we wanna go with what you meant regardless of anything, I think.
Okay, Counselor Wolf, if we were to introduce corrected words from Mr. Parker, would you be, would you be satisfied with the minutes then?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I guess I would ask, I would propose that the city clerk go ahead and confer with Mr. Parker and amend it accordingly, and then subject with that idea that we're gonna amend it, would would any member of council be willing to make a motion to approve it as it will be amended? Or do you want to let it come back? Julie?
I'll make a motion now, if that would work, whatever is easier for Jeff, he's stuck with the language here. Do you want some time, Jeff, or you wanna wing it?
Well, I mean, I guess I would just say that we add the words to that sentence instead of the one year as authorized by state statute.
I move for that.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Chandler. Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to amend the the minutes according to Mr. Parker's correction and then approve it. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Onto F2, approval of the March 16 regular meeting minutes. And Mayor Protem, you had, you were the one that had a concern, so you have the floor?
Thank you. On page 28 of the packet, under the match recommendations, I notice that the paren's area where, in the first, in the first paragraph, it says in the parentheses there that the 57% to be held until May match board meeting, and I thought that was incorrect, I confirmed with Neil Minch, and his, what he said, I believe, was that the 27.5% be held until the May match board meeting for final allocation recommendation. So that is what I would move, that that be changed if if council will agree with that.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the minutes and approve. Do we have a second? We have seconded by Counselor Wolf. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, please. Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, great, so we're pushing on to business now. Item. G1. I know it's hard to get into sometimes about this stuff, but we're gonna, we're gonna make the most of it here. Approval of Tim Beeson as a regular member of the Open Space Committee. I believe his materials were all in the packet, done. We, we would entertain a motion.
I move approval of Tim for the Open Space Committee.
And I'll second, I'll second that. Is, is he in how, is, I'd love to hear from him for a minute or so.
Let's see if he's a, in attendance in Zoom, he's not here at the city council.
Okay. I mean, is he, is he on Zoom?
So. Was invited, but I do not see his name under the Zoom.
Yeah.
Of attendees, if he is there under a different, if he could use the RayTan tool, we can bring him over.
Yeah, Mr. Beeson, if you're present under a different name, could you raise your hand? Looks like all the names we have here are legitimate.
Yeah.
No, no, it appeared that Mr. Beeson is not here tonight.
Well, in that case, can we just tell him if he ever bothers to watch this later? Thank you.
Okay, alright. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor of approving Tim Beeson as a regular member of the Open Space Advisory Committee, say aye, raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passing unanimously, very good, and we will, I'll send at least an email thank you to to Mr. Beeson. Okay. Item G2, Manitou Springs Mountain Metro Transit Intergovernmental Agreement for Shuttle Transportation. And I believe that is Mr. Chaney, Mr. Chaney, you have the floor?
Mayor and city council, can we bring over Craig Blewett from Transit Service, the Transit Service Manager? He's gonna do a presentation, and then after presentation, I will bring up the shuttle cost comparison, and then we will answer any questions. Well, Brian's here too, he can come on over as well.
So, a good afternoon or a good evening, I guess, Mayor and council members. Brian Vitulie, our planning supervisor with Mountain Metro Transit is here to provide any information or answer any questions that you may have. We do have a few slides to show if you'd like.
Please, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Blewett.
Actually, Brian, Brian has the slides, so Brian did send them over. I don't know if you have those, Judy, or not, or if Brian can, if not, then I think Brian can share his screen. Craig, that should be coming up in a second. Oh, great.
Thank you.
Brian, it's all yours.
Okay. Good evening, council. My name is Brian Vitulie, I'm the transit planning supervisor with Mountain Metropolitan Transit, and I just wanted to briefly share a few slides of our spring 2021 service change process, the items that were proposed, and the the final recommendations. Could you go to slide two, please? So to summarize what our proposal was, we are proposing to add a new Route 37, which will go from the Academy Hancock Superstop area to the new Peak Innovation Park and the Colorado Springs Airport. The, the last three items were all proposed by the city of Manitou Springs. The first one, Route 36, that was proposed to be extended from the Ruxton Avenue roundabout to the Serpentine Drive roundabout. And then the two items relating to Route 33, the Incline Cog Shuttle. The first item was to eliminate the second bus that operates on the weekends during the peak season, as well as reducing the operating hours in the off-season from 8:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Next slide, please. So Route 37, as I mentioned, goes from the Academy Hancock Superstop area where we have kind of a mini transfer center set up where four routes operate in and out of. It would then travel down Hancock Expressway to Milton Probie Parkway to the Peak Innovation Park, which is where Amazon is building three major facilities, which will be a major employment center for, for the southeastern part of Colorado Springs. It will then also go over to serve the Colorado Springs Airport Terminal. It's kind of, kind of designed as a a workforce shuttle, being that it's going to be, as, as we initiate the service later in June, it will be designed to primarily serve the the shift times of the Amazon facilities. So there will be early morning shifts from, you know, 7:00, 7:00 AM to 7:30 AM, and then the shifts at 5:30 and 6:00 PM and 6:30 PM. So this, this is a good start. We used to have service to the Colorado Springs Airport many years ago, but it was discontinued due to low, low ridership and economic conditions and and resource shortages. We, you know, as I mentioned, we do have high hopes for this service, this, this could be a major transportation link for a lot of the residents living in the southeastern part of the city, but also running it out of this, this transfer center at Academy and Hancock allows residents from throughout our system to transfer to this route to go to the Amazon facilities and the airport. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, Judy, could you go back to that? So I will, I will handle the recommendations as part of these slides. So, so this proposal was approved. This is a, a great opportunity, as I mentioned, to provide service to these major employment generators, and we're tentatively going to start the service on June 13th, you know, it's, it's kind of up to how the, how the development or construction of the facility is going, but that's the latest information we have is June 13th would be the start date for that. Next slide, please. So the Route 36 extension from Ruxton Avenue to Serpentine Drive, this, this is a very, very beneficial service to extend, it's, it adds no cost to either of us, Manitou Springs or Colorado Springs. It doesn't do anything to impact frequency, it just opens up the service to, to more users living, working, and staying in the west, the western part of Manitou Springs. So this item was approved as well, and that will be implemented when the spring service change begins on Sunday, April 25th. Next slide, please. So the two items relating to Route 33, the first was eliminating that second bus that operates on the weekends during the the peak season. That, that was not approved, but the city of. That, that was not approved, but the city of Colorado Springs agrees to pay for the cost of that. We feel strongly that the second bus continues to operate and maintain that ten minute frequency when, you know, when the service is at its peak demand from six A M to four P M on Saturdays and Sundays. That second bus will continue to operate thanks to the city of Colorado Springs. And the second item, reducing operating hours in the off season of Route thirty three. So that's reducing the ending time from eight P M to six P M in the off season. So that's January first until late April and then late September through the end of the year. And that, that, that also has been approved and that will not take effect until the Route thirty three summer service ends on Sunday, September twenty six. So starting September twenty six through the end of the year and through April of next year, that service will end at six P M. And just a kind of a summary on the next slide, Judy, if you will, please. These are just some of the, the benefits that we, we like to forward to everyone to to know what what the benefits of our, of our system is and that we provide a valuable service to the entire community. That's the greater Colorado Springs region. We operate in neighborhoods throughout the community. We connect neighborhoods to destinations. And we provide a service that's for the greater good of the community. Our community and neighbors are benefiting from the efforts to build a more robust transit system. And we've been doing that very robustly over the last several years. And a robust transit system, transit system positively supports economic development, job growth, improves traffic congestion and improves air quality. So that was it. And I am able to take any questions if there are any. Thank you.
But just real quick, so this was an overview of our proposed spring service changes. And as Brian noted, a couple of them were requested by, by Manitou Springs. And so we're reporting back on the results of that process. And and where we're headed from here.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Brian. And I believe, Mr. Chaney, you're gonna take over the presentation now.
Yes, Mayor, and so I brought up on the screen the shuttle cost comparison. So if we look at two thousand nineteen off season route thirty three, January to April, the, the next column is the scheduled hours of service. And then the amount seventeen thousand five hundred sixty nine. You have Route, Route thirty three, Route thirty six, again, the service hours and then the amount.
Can you speak up, please? I can't, I'm sorry. I have no idea what you said ever since like the third or fourth second of your presentation.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry about that. So let me start over. Two thousand nineteen off season Route thirty three, January to April. Again, the second column is the scheduled hour, so two hundred and seventy point two eight, the amount seventeen thousand five hundred sixty nine. We have Route thirty three and thirty six, which is the scheduled hours in the next column, which equals two hundred and eighty three thousand, two hundred and eighty three dollars. An off season Route thirty three, September to December is thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty four. So in two thousand nineteen, it was a cost of three hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty six dollars. Currently, in two thousand twenty one, you know, obviously in two thousand twenty with COVID, it was a different shuttle service. But in two thousand twenty one, plans are off season Route thirty three is gonna be seventeen thousand one hundred and forty four or one seventeen thousand one hundred and fourteen. In season Route thirty three is a hundred and forty two thousand four hundred and forty three. In season Route thirty six is a hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and eighteen and two hundred and twenty one totals two seventy two, one seventy. And then the one time subsidy from Colorado Springs of ninety one thousand. That brings our costs for two thousand twenty one to one hundred and eighty one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. I just want to emphasize with the, sorry, the the environmental impact to have a shuttle. We really need to try and reduce our congestion in town. Basically, forty cars from a full shuttle are removed from the road based on studies. Even if it's half, we're looking at twenty, it's a quarter, ten cars. It really does matter that we get some of the cars, cars off the road. And the shuttle is a great way to do that, and it's been proven of value to the environment. So the other side is the helping with just getting people into town with our limited parking on street. There has to be a way for people to get in town in a shuttle. Again, is a great way to transport people up to Ruxton downtown. So I highly recommend that we continue shuttle service and we approve the I G A for two thousand twenty one. So now, if there's any questions for Mountain Metro or myself, please let us know.
I have a question.
Okay, yeah. The question I have is that extra subsidy that Colorado Springs Metro is gonna pay for the extra shuttle.
I couldn't hear that. I couldn't hear that.
I, I can't hear you either, Steve.
I have it on maximum volume.
Talking right now. Okay, so my question is, is that extra subsidy that they're paying for the extra shuttle during peak hours, is that included in these figures?
It, it looks like that the ninety one thousand dollars of one time subsidy does not include the twenty seven thousand dollars that we are paying for the second service. So this ninety one thousand plus what we're paying for the second bus to operate during the peak season equals about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that the city of Colorado Springs is paying for twenty twenty one. But but the total cost of a hundred and eighty one thousand one seventy is correct. That is what Manitou Springs is committing to pay for twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Brian. Counselor Wolf, did you have a question?
Yes, I, I think my question's been answered, though. Thank you. And had to do with this chart and you know, the chart doesn't, it since, it doesn't tell us if the second bus is included on this or not, and if that's paid for, it's, it's not disclosed, it's not subtracted from. But I think I get it now. Is that the bottom line is that Manitou is committing itself to the one eighty one figure? Right? Okay. And do I also understand that if we're interested in requiring only electric vehicles on Ruxton at some point in the future, that were we told at a previous work session, we have to give you like, was it like twenty four months advance notice or something, or we could sign up or something? Can you? I know, can you address that for us?
Ryan, I'll, I'll start and then Brian might add. So this is Craig, Craig Blewett. Right now, you need electric buses or a type of manufactured bus that could actually provide that service. And we're not aware of any at this point in time. And so, yeah, there would be advance. And I, I need, do need to let you know that we are not charging for the cost of the vehicle at all in terms of the costs that we're ascribing to Manitou Springs. And so the acquisition of any new vehicles would be an additional cost.
But would we be, could we be considered, Craig? Could we be considered for any potential future pilot projects? I thought you were going to just target a few specific areas for a pilot project.
The, the electric buses that we're getting in about a year, four, four electric buses are forty feet long. The current buses that serve this route or serve these two shuttles are thirty feet long. So that's gonna be a bit large of a bus to, to serve better.
Adding on to what Craig says, Route three, the service that operates from downtown Colorado Springs to Hiawatha Gardens, that could be a potential candidate for one of these electric buses.
Is there a process for the city to apply to ask to be considered as any for any future pilot projects? Or do we just sit back and see if you decide to choose us?
Well, it, it could be. And, and you know, the, the restriction we have right now, the reason we have, we're getting forty foot long buses is because that's how big the bus has to be to have a bar, a battery large enough to hold the charge long enough. And so some of it's just, is really just based on available technology and, and what the bus manufacturers are building.
Well, I think we'd be really interested in being considered for, what is it that Brian said, Bus thirty six?
Route three.
Oh, yeah, I just want to know, how do we get our foot in the door?
Well, as part of our pilot program, you know, we're only going to have four buses to test throughout our entire system. And, you know, we, we have calculated the number of miles that Route three operates and you know, the, the terrain to operate from downtown Colorado Springs to Manitou Springs, it's, it's pretty, pretty level. I mean, there's not a whole lot of topographical changes, so that, that could be a good candidate to test battery electric buses. And it is one of, one of those that we've identified that it could be a good test route. So, I mean, we're not making promises and we're, we're likely to be moving these four buses throughout our system. So there's probably a good chance that sometime during our test program, you know, we'll have a battery electric bus on Route three.
Great, thank you.
Sure. And Counselor Wolf, I, I'd also like to ask or address your previous comment about the details of what you see in the spreadsheet here. If you go to page six of the draft I G A, it should be in your meeting packet. And also the, the memo that your staff developed for this item, there are details in there on the I G A, you know, everything, so you could probably find the answers.
Oh, right. Frankly, some of it was over my head because they had this, these charts and then all these numbers off to the side. And, and some of it was over my head, but thank you for explaining.
Yes. Mr. Chaney, you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor, just, just last week, we were in touch with a manufacturer of electric trolleys and electric buses. And we are, then we meet them to talk about the possibility of bringing that to Manitou and then working with Mountain Metro for them to drive them. So we are looking at some alternatives to that. Welcome.
Do we have other counselors? Counselor Chandler, see you have your hand up. Counselor Chandler?
Yes, thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciate it. Earlier this evening, we had a resident comment about the fact that Manitou is spending a lot of time focusing on the needs of our visitors, which is very important. And, but I, I do think that we also need to balance the needs and wishes of our residents. So it's always a balancing act. I know Roy said it's really important to keep cars off Ruxton. So it's a trade off between a, a bus with exhaust going up Ruxton Avenue every ten minutes versus every twenty minutes. So because this is the year that the cog is opening and Colorado Springs is paying for this shuttle for this season only, what I'd like to see at the end of the season is I want to see ridership numbers. I want to take a look at that and kind of see, see where we are with that at the end of the season. So that we, it can inform us going forward, what, what is in the best interest of our environment here, our residents, and balance that with our visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chamber. Do we have other counselor comments? Julie, let me, let me see if there's anybody else that hasn't spoke. Give them a chance. I guess not. Julie, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, and I, I mean this with all due respect and everything, but the point is that that second shuttle that Colorado Springs has so generously offered to fund going up and down isn't that kind of controversial to, for that neighborhood. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly since there may be members of the public interested in this, that we, we recognize that not everybody's happy about this so-called gift. But it's something that we can certainly revisit at the end of the season so that we can figure out going forward what might work better or, or best, best practices. So I just wanted to reinforce that, but thank you so much for your presentation.
I, I guess to, to follow on your comment there, Counselor Wolf, you know, I think about the, that, that second bus and that's moving a lot of people, which means that neighborhood isn't overcome with cars and congestions and parking problems. So while having the, there's, there's some exhaust concerns there, it seems to me like it's very much the lesser of two evils. We're getting the number of people out, the number of vehicles. We're moving in the right direction. So, you know, I, I don't think we're, we're gonna solve everything all at once, but I, I do think that Mountain Metro has, has done a, you know, a lot of good work for, for us. And the chart that Roy showed is Manitou's expense. We didn't show the expense that Colorado Springs is bearing as far as supporting the shuttle. So I do think that's, that's pretty significant. And there's, I think we've have a lot of benefits that we're getting out of this relationship with Mountain Metro. So I'd like to thank Craig and Brian in particular for the work you've done. Counsel, do we have any, any further questions? If not, I would, Counselor Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you. Two things. One is, given that the mobility study said our number one priority is to enhance or should be to enhance our public transportation. I think that this is a good check in the box, and I certainly agree with gathering data so that we can continue to finesse this for the next season. I'd also like to say this goes a long way as well in creating the partnerships with Colorado Springs and Mountain Metro, which I think are very healthy for our city. And with that, I'd like to move that we approve the Colorado Springs, Mountain Metro Transit changes to service and I G A for twenty twenty one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the I G A with Mountains or Colorado Springs, Mountain Metro Transit? Please say aye and raise your hand. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Craig, Brian, thank you very much. We appreciate your attendance and, and the information.
Thank you as well, and we, and we really appreciate our partnership with the city of Manitou Springs. And we look forward to working with you in the future as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That's super great. Okay, let's see. Next item of business. Resolution number zero six two one, the city of Manitou Springs, Colorado, adopting, adopting a media relations policy for the city of Manitou Springs. We heard this recent, heard initially about this in our, at our meeting of March the twenty third. It's come back tonight with the resolution. I believe Alex had a couple of things he wanted to mention to us. So Judy, if you could bring Alex over.
Good evening.
Alex, you have the floor?
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see that well?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. So hello, my name is Alex Treffrey. I'm the Public Information Officer for the city of Manitou Springs. I'm going to give a brief presentation regarding media relations policies that y'all saw on March twenty third. So, once again, the purpose of these is, or of this presentation is to explain the importance of having such policies and just detail what's within them. So this helps ensure that we are truthful. We have a singular source of information. We're coordinating planned responses and we're providing We're coordinating planned responses and we're providing sound and impactful reasoning, also known as the why. So what this policy entails is media inquiries received by city staff, city officials or other city personnel. Will be immediately referred to the PIO, myself. And every effort should be made to meet media deadlines. Additionally, the news likes new information, right, and so if contacted by me regarding, you know, information. To fulfill a media inquiry, city staff should respond with detailed and timely information. Additionally, all responses and communication to the media should be reviewed by myself. And also that elected officials will be kept updated with all communication given to the media. So for city spokespeople, we have the city administrator or their designated PIO, the deputy city administrator, the mayor. City council members, the city attorney, department directors, the chief of police. Or their design, or their designate, the chief of fire or their designate, and this was added recently, but board. And commission chairs, of course, and then also city employees with an expertise on a specific issue. And so the expectations for the media, that they can expect the same day response. Some inquiries may take longer than one day to formulate, depending on the coordination of it, how much research is involved and. If that research is spread across multiple departments. Additionally, some interview requests may not be fulfilled someday or on the same day due to, you know. Busy schedules, things like that. Additionally, in regards to litigation and personnel issues, as a matter of general practice. We do not discuss litigation or personnel-related information. So with personal points of view, all members of the cit, of the city have a right to express their personal point of view. And express it to the media, however, some personal points of view may conflict with the official city position. So employees, council members and other representatives, representatives of the city. Who communicate with the media may not use the official city of Manitou Springs stationery. And they must state that their forthcoming statements are not official city position. Additionally, if posting to social media, you must be clear that you are posting as a private citizen and not as a city of Manitou Springs employee. Council member or other city representative when posting personal points of view regarding matters of general public concern. And then again, during crisis and emergency issues, the protocol for handling that is outlined in the emergency operations plan. Mainly stating that the incident commander has lead responsibility as the official spokesperson. So for the social media policy, which is at the end of the media relations policies. It's just a way to mitigate the effects of trolling on social media. It allows the city to hide comments that you slur, slurs are off topic, etc. This is aligned with records retention through our archiving software. Many municipalities have social media policies, these ones are very similar to El Paso County. And then it's important to note that the violating comments are removed by myself, who's the person who monitors our social media. Additionally, if someone would like to contest that removal, they can provide ground-sparing statement to myself and my email is in the policy. Just to reaffirm, all of these policies are in line with the code of conduct for city council that was passed. In the latter quarter of twenty twenty. And then so just to reaffirm the changes in this policy, since it was last presented to city council on March twenty third. There's an addition of the correcting false information section, which basically states that if a city spokesperson provides incorrect information. To the media, of course, that wouldn't happen on purpose, but it is a possibility, right, so if that did happen. Then it just states that I would reach out directly to the media outlets who received that false information and correct it to be true. And also, under the personal points of view, it now states. If posting to social media, be clear that you're posting as a private citizen and not a city of Manitou Springs employee. City council member or other city representative when posting personal points of view regarding matters of general public concern. And then. Sorry about that. And then as stated earlier, the addition of boarding commission chairs as spokespeople. And then so the recommendation would be to approve a resolution adopting the media relations policies. And with that, I will take questions and unshare my screen.
Councillors, does anyone have a question for Alex?
Thank you. It's not so much a question for Alex, this is more of a comment for my fellow council members. I've had some real concerns about the way Manitou handles press releases on important issues. And I think it would be helpful if, you know, I don't mind if there's a press release about a. Kind of ministerial thing and has to do with a water main that breaks or. Power that's down in a certain neighborhood, but. For more potentially either controversial or issues that implicate policy matters. I'd like to suggest that in non-emergency situations that we review the proposed language before it goes out. And you know, I'm not as interested in media deadlines as I am in accuracy. And if accuracy equals the word truth that Alex is using then. And if truth really is number one and that's equal to accuracy, then I think we can ensure accuracy. Particularly on issues where there's a sensitivity about one little word could really change the impact. Particularly where we've attempted to articulate our policy as council to you all, but none of it gets really. Documented instantaneously with any kind of written statement with signatures, and so by the time we read about it or. Here reiterated in, in a news story. You know, it's changed and it's not what we meant or not what we expected, so I would be a lot more comfortable with this policy. If it didn't give complete hundred percent discretion to the city staff to continue doing what they're doing. The other thing is, I get a lot of my news from K R D O, because I don't get it from Manitou. I had no idea what was going to be released by Manitou to, in response to the. FOIA request or the open records. Cora request, I should say, not, not federal. And, no, I mean, I appreciate it and it was helpful to get the city attorney's confidential email and that was, that was certainly. Good guidance, but you know, I, I, I'm not, so I, I'm not really. In fa, I'm not in favor of this policy, I think we need help with the messaging. Another example is just even the rollout recently of the positive parking or whatever it's called. You know, I read all about it in the media, I never read once. The important sentence that says, don't bother trolling all through town. Looking for a cheaper spot because you're not going to find anything cheaper than a dollar a day at Hiawatha Gardens, that's what people need to hear. But instead I hear, oh, there's a sixty-four percent increase or sixty-four cent. And oh, and we don't worry, we're not going to find people for a long time because we're so friendly, well, hello. You know, I, I, so I think there could be, I, I, I'm not really happy with. I think we, you know, maybe our collective input together could result in something we're all more comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, other councillor members? Mayor Protem, please?
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to that. Whereas I can see that it would be very nice to have. Complete for council to have complete control over policy. Issues and how they're reported to the media. Discretion in that and I think it would completely hamstring. Communication if we start having seven, seven people editing press releases. So I, I think that Julie, what, what makes more sense is for us to bring specific examples. And learn from them rather than. Stopping this policy as it stands, I think, I think that this is a learning organization overall, I think people want to learn. Alex is great about, he usually will send us anything. As soon as he writes it and then he sends us all the news clips, so that we can see what is being sent out and what, what the media is. Relaying to the public. And then, of course, obviously, we always know that the media cherry picks what they want to say anyway, and we have. Only so much control over that and that is done through our news releases in general. So basically, I think I would prefer rather than hamstringing the flow of communication upfront. That we created into, into a learning process over time and. I personally think that the, the improvement in our communication with. Both our community and the press has improved a hundred percent over the past, since Alex has been on board. So I would very much support this policy as it stands, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shada?
I guess I concur with Julie, I was just checking through our council email. And the last time we got a press release from Alex was on the twenty fourth. And so I would like us that we be absolutely CC'd on every one of these press releases, okay? I think there is a major disconnect. I find that many times I get more information about what city administration is doing. From reading the media than from our own staff.
Councillor Chandler, please?
I, I want to concur with both councillors Wolf and Shada, I, I really do appreciate what Mayor Protem. Said, however, I really don't want to be our media and our press releases to be a learning opportunity. I think we've had a couple of learning opportunities and I, I do believe that council should be CC'd. On major press releases before they are going out. I, I always get the, after the fact, when they're already out there, but I tune into K R D O quite a bit and I know they do cherry pick, but. I would, I would like to be CC'd on those as well, I think that is really important and. Because this is a learning process, maybe down the road, we won't have to be CC'd on them in the future, but as this is rolled out, I think. In, in the first phase, I think it would be an important thing to do, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bremer, please?
Yeah, I'd just like to. Side with Mayor Protem Nancy Fortune, I, I think. CCing us on, on press releases is fine, I don't think we need to be CC'd and then. Come into council and try to wordsmith every press release, I think that's going to slow down the process too much. And it's probably not warranted in most press releases. I'm in general in favor of being CC'd as the press release goes out and not having us, you know, have to. Go back and wordsmith every single press release, thank you.
Another councillor, okay. Mayor Protem, please?
I was just wondering, I'm hearing a couple of different things, one is, is that. We could just add to the policy that we're always CC'd before a press release goes out. Would that satisfy people or are you looking for an opportunity to comment? Or amend the press release before it goes out? I mean, I would be satisfied if, if Alex CC'd us, you know. Before, as he's sending them out, so that we know it. Before something is published, I would be okay with that, but in terms of holding things up, that's what really concerns me.
I would be satisfied with that.
Be a little more specific, please councillor Chamber.
Thank you, I would, I would be satisfied with being CC'd on every press release. Prior to it going out.
Okay, thank you. I guess my position is, is similar to Mayor Protem's and councillor Bremer. I do think if we try to have seven people as gatekeepers for, for a news release, this becomes very cumbersome. Does that mean that, that on a Wednesday morning, we all have to, you know, be wide awake by six AM so we can see what the news release is supposed to be and so forth? I, I don't think that the team approach to writing a press release is, is really workable, I. I think I've seen that in a past career and it didn't, didn't go well for the people who tried it. I don't think it's, it's really workable, I do think we have a pretty good arrangement currently with Alex, I, you know, I think he jumps on it, he. You know, gets a good, a good take, a good factual take and he presents it. And I think that's the best you can do with, with the media, they may cherry pick to some degree, but. I think the, the basic rule is we try to do the right thing and then we tell the truth and. It's, if you've got that for material, the press release shouldn't be a huge concern, so I'd say do the right thing in the first place. And then tell the truth, so I, I would gravitate towards a position similar to, to Nancy and Steve's. Denise, please?
Yeah, I believe that we do try to CC on everything and if we miss some, I do need to apologize for that. Because that's the policy is to CC you and all of employees on every press release that goes out, so. If we missed one on that, I need to apologize for that.
Let's see, I believe Alex had his hand up first, then councillor Wolf, Alex?
Yes, so city council is part of my distribution list, right, so depending on the type of press release that's going out, if it's minor work. You know, on a side street in Manitou Springs, that just goes to all city staff, city council and Rhonda over at the Pike's Peak Bulletin. If it's a larger press release, of course, that goes to all the news outlets that have requested to be on our distribution list, so with every press release that goes out. They're all posted on our website and also sent directly to the city council.
Thank you, Alex, councillor Wolf, please?
Thanks. Do you concur, Alex, that the last time we were CC'd on any press releases was March twenty fourth? Was that like twelve days ago or something, two weeks ago? How many, have you done any press releases since then?
I would have to check my email, but. Let me, let me confirm.
Okay, meanwhile, do we have other comments? Okay, we'll stand by and give Alex a minute then.
Um, so right here, I see a double-wide trailer removal on that impacted parking on Plainview and. Poplar sent on March thirty first. And then I, I'm still, still checking.
If I could, I, I'm, I'm hearing that. The majority of council would be okay if we amended the policy to simply say that council will be. CC'd prior to it going out and it doesn't, we're not putting a time limit on that, it's just. Prior to it going out, which is kind of what Alex is trying to do anyway, but we can just. Put that in the policy itself to ensure that. Council's wishes are known. I think if we make a motion to that, I think the majority are in favor of that.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to that effect, Mayor Protem?
Sure, I move that we approve resolution number zero six two one, a resolution of city of Manitou Springs, Colorado. Adopting a media relations policy for the city of Manitou Springs amended to include that the PIO. Will CC city council members prior to it being distributed. Or at the same time, if that's okay with everybody, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the resolution as written with the amendment that Mayor Protem just read. Any further discussion? Okay, guess not, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand, aye? We have four, five votes, all opposed, say nay and raise your hand? Okay, one, one nay, so the motion passes five to one, okay, thank you very much, thank you, Alex. Okay, next item of business is um. First reading of ordinance number zero six two one, an ordinance of the City of Manitou Springs, Colorado. Authorizing the municipal court to refer unpaid penalties, fines, fees, costs, and restitution to private collection agencies. And authorizing the city to defer to refer delinquent amounts owed to the city to private collection agencies. So this is a a new ordinance, um, Mr. Parker, it seems like you would be the person to speak to this initially, Mr. Parker, you have the floor.
Yeah, I would be happy to, I I do think that your finance director Rebecca Davis was planning on presenting it, and I'd be happy to join her or add in, I just didn't want to, didn't want to steal her thunder, so.
Thank you.
My bad, Becca, you have the floor again.
Yes, I was looking forward to making this presentation. And you were taking the wind away from my wings, okay. So recently, staff presented a contract to city council for approval for T two systems to collect unpaid parking fees. Uh during the council discussion, the city attorney Jeff Parker. Stated that the city needed a code change to allow the city to use a private collection agency to collect unpaid. Delinquent amounts, and this is the ordinance that Jeff wrote, I did not write it. But uh this ordinance makes that code change, now please note. That uh at the time this was written, delinquent parking fees are only. The only fines that are going to be given to a private agency for collection. Uh, it's written very, very broadly, and Jeff did this deliberately for potential future needs. So it wasn't like we went to the judge and got her uh buy-in for this, because right now, I believe the state's still collecting for them, but uh. Yeah, there could be changes in the future, but the judge is not here on this line, because uh this is really only about parking fines, delinquent parking fines.
Yeah, I I can add a couple of comments if you don't mind, Becca. Um, yeah, initially, I had thought that the uh parking fines all went through your municipal court. And so I'd initially drafted uh the ordinance to basically authorize the municipal court to refer unpaid fines and. Penalties to a collection agency when the court desires to do so. Because I believe the law basically has the municipal court retaining jurisdiction over how. Um, its fines and fees get managed and addressed, and so that's an issue for the municipal court to handle. So the first draft basically authorized the court to impose, to send to the collection and impose a collections fee. Um, and then I talked to your parking manager and to Becca, and they informed me that almost all your parking tickets just go straight through an administrative process. And don't generally go through municipal court. So then I added a provision to your main code, which just gave the city general authority. To refer delinquent amounts owed to the city to collections whenever the city desires to do so, and so. You're not required to do so, city can basically decide what it's appropriate, when it's not appropriate. But that would include the ability to send unpaid um parking fines to a collection agency, so. You know, the process of looking through all this, I basically just gave the city broad authority to 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 do so for any kinds of fines when it felt like it was appropriate. And I also put a provision in for the municipal court to do so, when there's municipal court fines that might be appropriate to refer to in a collections agency as well.
Right, during my discussion with Jeff about this, I thought it was a good thing, and as uh we agreed that having it as broad as possible is a. A good thing at this time, so that we don't have to bring an ordinance back to say, okay, now we're adding this additional little aspect. Just clean sweep, get her, get it accomplished right off the bat.
Yeah, like I said, it doesn't require anything to be referred to them, and there's lots of other avenues the city has to collect unpaid fines and fees, I just. Felt like we give you the broad authority, and then you can exercise your discretion when necessary.
Thank you, um, question, Counselor Wolf.
So this, is this different from the T two parking fines?
Nope, it is the T two parking fines that it's about, it's the ordinance that goes with it.
And so, um, and just the one percent just continue for what, six, is there a statute of limitations on our collection of parking fines, Jeff?
Hmm, no, not that I'm aware of, I mean, we, the amount, the amounts owed were to be to collect it, I mean. I guess, um, yeah.
It'll be like one percent a month until you die, it could be like five hundred percent.
Well, well, ultimately, um, well, it could be, yeah, I mean, we've had, I've had, I've had people who actually owe a lot of money in interest for.
So is our our municipality subject to the state usury laws? What is it, like forty-five percent, I think, or forty-three percent is like the maximum you can charge for interest? Are we centred from that?
No, but I think that, I think the the usury laws are basically um an annual rate, right, they're not just a total, are they? I think that.
No, it's an annual rate.
Right, so we're well, we're well below that.
And then, do you know if the two hundred and forty-two thousand and some change uh money that's owed to us, is that like since the year nineteen hundred, or since when?
You know, I don't really, I don't know what year that, I mean, that's from, but it's not nineteen hundred, it's more like. Twenty thirteen, whenever we, maybe from twenty thirteen, it can't be any earlier than twenty thirteen, because that's when we. Um, put the parking program into place.
Oh, okay. So it's about eight years, okay.
Yes.
But it seems to me like maybe. Okay, right, right now, we're discussing ordinance zero six two one, this is uh kind of an umbrella approach, as I understand it, to uh. Collections of fines and so forth, I believe this was done in anticipation of the T two systems uh. Item, which is, that's item five, that's not what we're discussing right now, so we're, I think, uh. Mr. Parker, would this be fair to characterize that this is kind of a general umbrella approach um supports? Among other things, the the T two systems collection.
Yeah, that's correct, and I I didn't really draft it specifically for the T two system, I just basically drafted it, so we have the authority, so that's correct.
Right, okay, so so let's consider these two two items, it's item four, which is what we're on, let's consider that separate from from item five, okay, let's not quite. You know, let's let's uh try and differentiate that, uh Counselor Chandler?
It, so um, I realize what you just said, but I do have to mention that in reading the T two presentation to follow. If we were to go with T two systems, uh they um tack on thirty percent. To whatever is turned over to collections, and so I just want, I just want to, this is just a clarity question, so. This um chapter three point oh four uh dot zero one zero interest rate and the the uh the one to follow, delinquent payment to the city. Just refers to what the um, what would be owed to the city. Prior to be it being turned over to collections where they would tack on their additional fee. Prior to wanting, so I just want to make sure that I'm getting that right.
No, that that, that's a really good question, because the way it would actually work is that the city would authorize, uh, your city council would authorize. An actual collections fee as part of your fee schedule um every year, and that collections fee would then be what. Could be basically charged to pay a collections agency like T two systems. And there is a statute in Colorado that does limit the total amount of uh fee you can charge for um collections. And um, you know. I I've I've provided a memo to city council, and you know, there's some arguments that doesn't apply to home rule jurisdictions, but there's an issue there, so.
Yeah, and and that is exactly the issue I'm having here, because it's my understanding that the city can tap that on, but then if we were to go with T two systems. Um, and they, you know, they say that their processes, um, they tack on another thirty percent, I. That's got to be part of our discussion. It with that potential contract, okay?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
You know, so let's try and keep our comments to the to the ordinance uh zero six two one. Um, Julie, see, when we end up, but let's see if there's anybody else that hasn't had a chance to speak, it wants to speak, any council members, other council members? Okay, guess not, Julie, go ahead.
So with respect to zero six two one, does that mean, Jeff, that um uh we may have to tell T two, because that's, you know, what's being recommended, that we use them? So if that happened, then we would have to revise the ordinance again to say, oh, P S, you can also charge. Uh, where where the city is also also charging, uh authorizing the charging of an additional thirty percent? Or is this ordinance going to protect us with that additional thirty percent?
Well, you'd have to basically adopt a fee schedule that au- that authorizes the additional percentage amount that you're gonna. Authorize to be charged as part of the collections fee, so you would do whatever that is.
Would that be part of this ordinance, or would that be a whole separate ordinance, or where does that?
No, that is actually by resolution, so once there's been decisions made about this uh second thing that's coming up. Then the resolution with the fee schedule be brought back to city council to add that fee. To the fee schedule as a separate resolution.
Oh.
Not tonight.
I'm seeing, so this doesn't preclude us from any future arrangements for additional fees, in other words, that's just comes up later.
That, that's right, and you you know, you have to basically decide what you're going to authorize the actual collections fee to be, you know, whatever that is going to be, that comes in your fee schedule resolution.
Okay.
And so, you know, we can have that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
But that, I way, I drafted it that way, so you basically wouldn't have to do a new ordinance every time, if something changes, or you want to change, then they can just do a resolution like you do with every fee you charge and just update it.
If you remember a while back, we brought the resolution for a fee schedule forward and had a discussion about Lamas. Mm-hmm, that was a while ago.
Great, thank you, um, do we have any further questions for Becca or Mr. Parker? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion uh on ordinance zero six two one. So we have um, um, Mayor Protem, I think you had your hand up first.
Sure. Um, I move we uh approve ordinance zero six two one, an ordinance in City of Manitou Springs, Colorado, authorizing. The municipal court to, God, can't read this, refer unpaid penalties. Fines, fees, cost and restitution to private collection agency and authorizing the city to refer delinquent amounts owed to the city. To private collection agency on first reading instead of public hearing for April twentieth at six PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second uh to approve the ordinance, all, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you, okay. Okay, our next item of business, G five, is consideration of the T two systems, um software integration and citations collections. I think that may be a little bit uh longer than some of the topics we've had tonight, so I would suggest we take a ten minute break. Uh, if there's no opposition, let's uh come back at seven thirty-five about, thereabouts. Um, I wanted to say, Becca, thank you for your presentation, also, Mr. Parker. See you in about ten minutes.
Be great.
Hi, welcome back, everybody. Okay. And we have everybody here, Mr. Chaney is here, although he doesn't appear to be on TV. Okay, all right, so the next agenda item is uh item G five, uh consideration of the T two system's software integration and citation collections topic. And um, Mr. Chaney, are you going to start this, or are we going to write to Kevin?
Well, we will bring over Kevin Stevenson, parking director, who will go through the T two system software contract.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council.
Um, good evening, Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'm going to begin sharing my screen for the presentation of the T two software integration and collections for citations. Is everybody able to see my screen?
No, Kevin, we can't see it.
Once you select it, hit the share, share screen button, it should be in green.
Thank you, is everybody able to?
Yes.
It looks like it's coming up now, Kevin.
Great, thank you.
Well, there we are, good.
All right. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is going to be two-part, we are going to first discuss the software integration as well as. Hardware integration um with T two systems for the parking management system. The purpose of this will be uh ease of use for the residents, businesses, and visitors. This will provide real-time reporting and monitoring for staff on the parking program. We will be able to receive matrices for reporting of citations, citation payments, as well as appeals. And we will have one point of contact for any technical support, and this will reduce some downtime. And I would like to touch on that, that currently the parking department is using old outdated equipment, which is causing. Immense maintenance issues, as older equipment wears out, the technology is not keeping up with our other technologies. Um, we are also using separate vendors, which is causing breaks in communications. The solution for all of that would be to integrate T two systems that currently supports ninety-two percent. Of our parkers' initial transactions with parking. To integrate their system, which will work very well with the other components of the system that the city already uses. So our current software hardware components are the Passport Labs, and I do have a unit that my staff currently uses. It's very large and bulky, this is for our parking enforcement, it issues our citations. We also use them for our residential parking permits, as well as our lock permits, they are able to take. Payments for citations as well as do our appeals, we're using a separate system from the T two, which we're having constant breaks in communications, as I've. Said prior, moving to the T two. They are our current software vendor, they provide all of our kiosk hardware, as well as our software for the reporting. Which is known as Digital Iris, this tracks all of the parking transactions, as well as the parking revenue. They provide us with back office support system, it is referred to as boss in our parking office. This is what controls the units, we can easily change them at the tips of our fingers. And they offer extended by phone software that integrates with parking mobile very well. As I stated, our proposed software, it will speak very clearly and well with our parking kiosks, which are provided and operated by T two systems. And it will give us an additional software for the citation issuance, parking permit issuance, as well as our citation and appeals. And this will put all of the parking program under one vendor, and that will provide a immense ease of access to staff as well as the users. Our current cost comparison is Passport charges us ninety thousand dollars a year for equipment rental. As well as the software that they provide, we currently pay T two thirty-two thousand dollars a year for the software and support on the kiosks. For a total of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars annually. Moving to the T two system, it will be an initial cost of one hundred and six thousand dollars for a. Custom-built package for the City of Manitou Springs Parking Department. In addition to the kiosk software that we pay for, and that will go down. The second year to just over twenty-one thousand dollars, and then a little bit above that for year three of twenty-three thousand dollars. We will spend a little more in the beginning, but that will. Allow the city to own the equipment instead of renting the equipment every year, and then that will give us a savings. Of just under, it looks like eighty thousand dollars annually for the next two years. The benefits of the software management and integrating with T two is the definitely the cost savings. The seamless paid parking enforcement and per- permit management systems. This will also greatly maximize the efficiency of the parking department, it provides one point of contact for any software or hardware issues that we have. Currently, as I stated, with the older equipment, with them being under a warranty and being rented, we have to send them back to the manufacturer for repairs, which takes the unit out of service. repairs, which takes the unit out of service for upwards of fourteen days for travel time as well as repair time. This will provide us all cloud based, internet based app support on our enforcement that will easily be fixed over the air in a matter of minutes to an hour at tops, as I have dealt with T two in the past on support. And it's always been very fast in response. And it will, as stated earlier, increase reporting across all the metrics of our parking management system. This is just a quick highlight of what our reporting will look like for staff. We have a plethora of reports to choose from to monitor all matrices, and we are able to manage citations and enforce the rules effectively. So here is a quick overview of the e-commerce portal, which the customer will be able to access to pay for parking, pay for a parking permit, pay a citation or appeal a citation. It puts everything at the tips of their fingers, and it will maintain a uniform look when using all parts of the parking system. The enforcement app, as I said, we will go from the large current units that my staff carries to a city issued cellular phone, which our size difference is greatly comparable as well as about a three and a half inch by three and a half inch Bluetooth printer that will connect to the phone. And that will be the extent of the equipment for the parking enforcement. Here is a photo of the Bluetooth printer. It will be accompanied by either a shoulder strap or a belt clip, which will help staff in keeping track of their equipment, not having to lug around such a bulky piece of hardware. And our software features with T two are stable and reliable cloud based software with a ninety nine point nine nine percent runtime. So the system is very rarely down, and if it is, it's for scheduled maintenance that I just tonight received an email will be conducted overnight during non paid parking hours. It's secure, monitored and fully maintained software by T two. The City of Manitou Springs will have a dedicated accounting team for any issues or training that we need. T two is offering a support center that will be available twenty four seven, three hundred and sixty five days a year for any emergencies as well as the backend software, online portal and the enforcement app that all communicate in real time with the reporting software. For example, a customer receives a parking citation, doesn't understand why. Currently, my staff has to return to the office, upload all of the citations that were written, which takes anywhere from one to twenty four hours to be into the next system for us to review, which causes Parker frustration as they're not able to get their questions answered in real time. This will upload instantly and staff will be able to pull that citation and answer any questions that they have the second that they call. Our parking reporting management, as stated before, this is just what we have of the license plate, the site, the parker's name, when this went in and all of the information regarding the vehicle in question. It integrates with our pay stations. It will integrate very well with their enforcement app. We will have the Flex Parking Management Software, the online portal for customers, and it will integrate very well with our current LPR system, the license plate recognition and our patrol vehicle. At this time, I will take any questions regarding the software and hardware integration.
Counsel, do we have any questions on the software and hardware integration for Kevin?
I would like to add that by integrating with T two systems, this will greatly benefit us with the the expectation that the cog will reopen and our tourists will be very high this summer. We anticipate a lot of questions regarding the new paid parking expansion in these citations. Approval of the contract greatly reduce staff downtime and Parker frustration. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the collections portion.
Thank you, Kevin. I I do see a couple of questions out there. I believe Counselor Chandler had her hand up first. So Counselor Chandler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I I have three questions. I don't know where this fits into your presentation, but my first quick question is, what is our current contract status with Passport Labs?
That contract is set to expire at the end of April this year.
Okay. And my second question is about owning versus leasing equipment. You said in year one, one hundred and six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Is it in Manitou Springs best interest to own equipment? I know with things like this, I mean, they they go antiquated so so quickly. And I'm assuming that the year two and three, the the twenty two thousand dollars is is that for maintenance? So have you owning versus leasing in case we need to make major changes?
As far as I know, as long as the phone is up to date, T two will keep the system up to date with whatever operating system, the Android or the iPhone is using. The reduction in cost is due to software licensing. That is what it would cost us to pay for the apps as well as the online portals for staff and the customers.
Okay, thank you. And my my third question is, and I'll quote this in our packet, it states that T two was quote not sent out for RFP per the city policy of an existing contract with T two systems for parking kiosks and backend software. Uh, we discussed this going out for RFP the last time you presented. Are there any other systems that would work as well as T two with regards to the current software and hardware that we already have? And how would we if, you know, I'd like to know that.
I feel that if we were to go to a separate vendor for the software hardware, we would be in the same position that we're in. T two designed all of our kiosks. This is a separate division of T two that has been designed to work specifically with their equipment. And it would cost the city. T two offers these current kiosks at just under sixteen thousand dollars apiece. We currently have thirty nine. We would have to change all of our current kiosks to get software integration that T two is offering if we went with another vendor.
Okay, that's thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. I believe the mayor Protem had her hand up.
I was just wondering, Kevin, are you looking for two separate votes on this, one for the this section and one for the collections, or are you just looking for one for the entire presentation?
My my expected outcome goal for this evening is to receive a vote for both contracts. Both parts of the contract, but I will gladly accept a hardware software integration agreement.
Mr. Chaney has his hand up. I believe he wants to make a recommendation.
Yes, I we want to vote on this item as it's a separate issue than the second collections item. So we'd like to make that vote for the equipment that we need to operate the parking department, and then we'll talk about the second issue and make that a separate issue to discuss and present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chaney. So really, we want to go ahead and take care of the software integration question first. So as we, I would like to see if there's any any further, if we have any additional questions relative to the software integration. And I can only see a limited number of hands at one time, so. Okay, so okay, I don't see that there's any interesting continuing discussions. In other words, no more questions. So I would entertain a motion to approve the T two system software integration contract. Do we have a motion? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Was that Julie?
Yes, yes.
We have a motion by Helsa Wolf and I believe a second by Mayor Protem. Okay, so we motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, say aye and raise your hands, please. Okay, okay, motion passes six to zero unanimously. Thank you. Very good. Okay, so let's go ahead and entertain the citation collections portion of the contract. Kevin, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to cover the citation collection services. This is the division of T two that handles citation collection specifically. Uh, the purpose of this will be to explain why this was not sent out to an RFP due to the existing contract for services. After speaking with Finance Department Deputy City Administrator Roy Chaney, it was discovered that we did not have to follow that protocol as we are amending a current contract or adding to a current contract with a vendor. Um, we will discuss why the parking citation debt is different from standard debt collections, the real time reporting of collection activities, an explanation of the debt set off program, as well as the overview of the backlog of unpaid debt. Currently, we are using Passport Systems for our debt, our citation collections. Currently, they just send out a delinquent violation notice after thirty days, another one at sixty days and a final one of ninety days. There are no active debt collection practices that are taking place by Passport. After thirty six months, the debt is written off and it falls off of our tracking. Our proposed with T two is they will actively take our backlog as well as any future citations and actively collect on those. Currently, under our contract with Passport, there's a twenty five percent fee that is charged to the city for any citation that is collected. The total cost is twenty five percent off of that. I wish I would have received my information earlier that this past week to be able to provide that to counsel. I just received an invoice today for the collection portion from Passport. They collected twelve thousand dollars in the month of March, and their collection fee for doing so was thirty one hundred and twenty five dollars that the city was shorted in unpaid collection fees that was collected by Passport as the fee to provide that service. The proposed is T two systems will add the thirty percent as approved by council, should that be the fee schedule for sending this to collection, not on top of any other fees that are sent to onto the Parker in an attempt to collect the debt, they will keep the thirty percent for their services and make the city whole on any amount owed on that citation.
I may have a question about that, or would you rather I wait?
I've got a couple more slides, Counselor Wolf, and I will take questions at the end. If you could write that down, I will gladly answer.
Thank you.
The potential earnings with T two citation collection services would be the seventy thousand dollars off the most recent debt that I had available to send them out of the two hundred and I believe it was thirty six thousand. I was only able to go up to, I believe, twenty seventeen in my backlog in my current system. And going forward, they are anticipating a collection of forty thousand dollars of anybody who does not pay a citation within that first thirty days. T two's average collection rate is sixty percent. T two uses a soft collection method to protect the city's reputation. They have over fifteen years of experience specializing in parking debt site collections. And here are some explanations on the debt set off program that will only apply to a Colorado resident. They are unable to attach to debt that is owed from a non Colorado resident through the debt set off program. Their experience in the state of Colorado with citation collections include the City of Boulder, City of Fort Collins, City of Golden, as well as the City of Aurora. Here are some collection rates year to date for the aforementioned cities. City of Boulder currently has a sixty three percent collection rate on unpaid citation debt. City of Golden fifty seven percent, City of Fort Collins forty five percent, and I would like to make special note of the City of Aurora. They are a recent customer of T two citation collection services, and they provided a large backlog to T two that lacked the required information to attempt to collect that debt. So T two has been gathering that information, whether it's current or former addresses in an attempt to locate the violator to begin collection services. And here's an explanation of how traditional debt and parking debt differ. Traditional debt can be reported to the credit bureaus, which will affect the the customers' credit rating. Most often, they're they're contractually based. There was a contract signed for services. This does not apply to a parking transaction. And it often requires a service such as utilities, a cell phone, anything like that, and they are not politically charged. Parking citation debt cannot be reported to the credit bureaus. As I aforementioned, there is no contract for the parking transaction. There's no motivation on the violator to pay, and this is a very politically charged topic. Why? What is the tax debt set off? Here's a more in depth explanation of what that is in the state of Colorado. Its tax refund dollars are redistributed to pay off the debt from the state of Colorado. Is this allowed in Colorado? Colorado is one of the states that does allow this service. Who does this apply to? As I mentioned, this will apply only to any Colorado resident who is entitled to a Colorado state tax refund. How does that work? The tax set off files are exported to the state from T two citation collection services. The state matches the claims list with the refunds that are due to taxpayers. When the state approves the tax intercept request, a check will be issued to the City of Manitou Springs as well as payment. The process for collecting all unpaid citations, they will do the backlog of unpaid citations, so that will be transferred upon a grants of the contract and the signing of the contract. T two will then set out notices, and they will follow their ninety day collection cycle. The newly issued parking citation, they will be issued given thirty days to pay the violation. A late fee, which is currently imposed imposed now with the City of Manitou Springs, will be applied on the thirty first day. Should the city agree to the thirty percent collection fee, that will be added on the sixty first day, and then they will again follow their ninety day collection cycle. Here's a quick overview of the ninety day collection cycle. And then here are some overviews of the client portal on what they are, what we will be able to pull up to see on reporting and where the status is on our current collections. Our customer details, this will give us all the information of when the debt was entered and when the debt was ended. I'm not sure why we went black. And it looks like we are finished up, so I will take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, counsel, questions? I think Julie, you had something.
Thank you. So after ninety days of T two working it then, um, or whenever they, you know, kind of give up, then um, if there's no tax refund to intercept, um, can you really take someone to court? I mean, would anyone bother to go to? Who who would bother to go to court over a hundred and fifty dollar ticket? In other words, are there any remedies other than the tax intercept?
If I may, I do not have the answer to that question. I do have T two in the audience. Would I be able to bring them over? They would be able to better answer that question. Uh, Judy, I'm looking for Melina Morokovic and Kristy Boggs, please.
Yeah, Judy, please go ahead and bring them over if you would.
Kevin, what was the second name?
Kristy Boggs.
Okay. Kevin, would you like to restate the question and direct it to the proper individual?
Uh, Kristy, I think you'd be best suited to answer this question. Should the Should the violator not be entitled to a Colorado state refund, what would happen and would it be worth going to court to try to collect that debt?
Sure, Kevin, and that's a great question. So with with collections on the parking citations, the ninety-day collection cycle that Kevin shared with you just shows the repetition of the work that's being done. So we feel like the first ninety days is the most important. So we continue that cycle of the phone calls as well as scrubbing the data to continue to try to collect on that particular citation. In reference to the question about taking it to court, it's not recommended for such a low amount of a fine to be taken to court, but the collection calls will continue on the account.
Oh, may I have a follow-up question for you, Kristy?
Sure, absolutely.
So are there any other state remedies besides the tax refund intercept here? I'm thinking specifically like if there's past due child support or alimony that hasn't been paid, then, you know, they can take away your license, your driver's license, your fishing license, your law license, your accountant license, your hunting license, any kind of damn license. Are there any other remedies that the state offers that we should know about besides the tax, the state tax refund intercept?
Sure, so you do have the tax refund intercept that's available. We could also look into potentially registration holds, depending on how many citations that particular violator has and how much is outstanding. Typically, we work with our organizations to, with their processes and their internal processes, like maybe booting or towing. So we would work with your organization to determine what would be the best avenue for you to take with the collections.
Oh, so the state authorizes us to refuse to give them a new registration for their car unless they've paid in full, and that's just a state law that allows us to do that?
It depends on how many citations are outstanding for that particular violator.
Oh. And do you handle that as well, you know, on those rare cases where you cannot cajole the person into cooperating?
So we do have tasks that are in the flex, the parking system that allows you to set up and actually send that data out to the DMV.
Oh, we do it?
It would be automated.
Oh. Okay, thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Bremner had a question.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a question for Kevin or for Kristy, but is there, like, for these frequent violators or people who have more than, more than one violation, parking violation in Manitou Springs, can we boot their car or somehow get them in a way like that? Or can we put a warrant out for their arrest for parking tickets?
Currently, we, city of Manitou Springs does have a code. After three unpaid parking violations, and after that thirty-day cycle of them being notified that they are boot eligible, the city of Manitou Springs can immobilize or impound that vehicle. We do currently have a code for that.
Thank you.
Other counselors, do you have questions?
Have we ever, ever, ever used that? I know you're new, Kevin, but Denise is shaking her head yes. Yeah.
Yes, we have. Recently, Mr. Chaney might be able to give me a better date. I want to say five weeks ago, we actually dealt with an immobilized vehicle. We located one that owed the city of Manitou Springs about seven hundred and fifty dollars. The vehicle was located and mobilized, and unfortunately, the violator chose not to pay. The vehicle was subsequently impounded.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any additional questions? Okay. If not, I'd certainly entertain a motion to go ahead with the citations collections contract with T2 Systems. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of that contract, John.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. And I saw Councilor Wolf also got her hand up, so I think we're more than, more than out of support here. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Okay, and Kevin, thank you to
Thank you, Kevin.
preparation on this. And thank you to the T2 folks who were in attendance tonight and helped to answer questions. Great. Okay. All right, that takes us to Item H, Receiver Act on Council Correspondence. Okay. Does anyone have anything to start off with? Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you. Went to the URA strategic planning meeting last week, and they were looking at a number of things, but of particular interest were additional trees and greening up Manitou Avenue in the URA as well as El Paso. And they were looking at if there's any place for potential acquisition. Also went to the match committee meeting, and they were looking at lessons learned from the last round of applications. And they revised, based on that, they revised some, the application, they're in the midst of revising the application for the next round, and that'll begin, I think, in April and to be completed in the July timeframe. And lastly, I was at the parrot meeting last night. They're hoping, fingers crossed, that Soda Springs Park renovations will be completed end of May or sometime in June, hopefully end of May. They would, similar to what OSEC did, they would be interested in coming to city council to do a presentation separate and distinct from their budget presentation. And lastly, they've been looking at Wheeler Park, and they're looking at requirements to improve Wheeler Park with potential, looking at ideas, the theme being contemplative. Maybe a yoga pad, a labyrinth, some benches, just very quiet. So that's one of the things we're looking at, but they will, they are planning a community engagement on that. So lots of boards and committees are doing a lot of great work. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, I've got, I have something. Yesterday, I received a very unexpected email. This was from Counselor Susan Wolbrook. She has tendered her resignation from city council. She, I think, with this announcement, she will, at some point, forward messages on to council, perhaps going in greater detail here for reasons or whatnot, but basically, she simply, she simply resigned, so we'll have to find a, we'll have to appoint someone to fill her place. That's Ward One. So that was very unexpected. I will mention that in looking back to last year when Bob Todd resigned, he had resigned on April the first. We took applications from interested parties until the twenty-ninth of April. And our first set of interviews was May the fifth. And the final set, which was between Mr. Bremner and another individual, that was May nineteenth, so it was about a roughly a six or seven week cycle. So we'll have to get that in the schedule. Anyone else? Counselor Chandler?
I didn't have anything for tonight until I heard Mr. Sid Nichols, and I don't want to just leave that hanging. I know that you passes in Ward Three, but Mr. Nichols did sound like he was open to being part of a solution. So if Counselor Bremner is open to meeting with him, I would certainly join you in meeting with him and just seeing what is on his mind and what potential solutions to whatever issues he has. So I just want to offer that so that we just don't let that fall through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bremner, please.
Yeah, thank you, Judith. I'd certainly be happy to meet with him. I see that we have an email from him too, I haven't looked at, but it probably includes more details he was able to go into in his short little presentation tonight. Yeah, let's try and
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else for council correspondence? Okay, I guess not. All right, let's entertain future agenda items. Do we have any, any requests and suggestions? Okay, I think Counselor Bremner was, he had his hand up first out of my peripheral vision, so Counselor Bremner and then Counselor Wolf.
Yeah, one future agenda item I'd like to bring up would be Sheep Mountain. Last session, we weren't able to get into it, you know, everything was shortened up because of the executive session we had planned. But, so I'd like to get back to that. We'll sort of have a discussion and see where we stand on that, because I think that needs to be addressed. The other one, I've talked to you Mayor Graham about it before, and it's going to be an executive session item, and I don't want to address it publicly right now. It involves property. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wolf?
Thank you. I'd like to have a session as soon as possible about parking, about Hiawatha. I want, I would really like to see if we could discuss a press release informing people that there's no use cruising and cruising and cruising around town to look for cheaper parking, because it don't get any cheaper than a dollar a day. And I also want to be able to talk about whether just our whole park, parking policy or philosophy about whether parking should get more expensive as you get to the center of town, like how most cities do, and whether it should get more expensive during high season, like most resort towns do. So I'd like to have a parking, a parking agenda. How does that work? Do we need to vote on yes or no if other people agree?
What I'd like to do is see if we do have at least four members, four council members in favor of that. I would mention that we have discussed some of the parking and whatnot. I think probably the, probably Roy could give us a quick refresher without a whole lot of the necessity of preparation, and that might be sufficient to get us going and be a good starting spot if we wanted to do that. See, Denise has her hand up. Denise, did you?
There we go. With that, I just want to ask Councilor, are you ready to take that back to the Parking Advisory Board first? Since they're your advisory board, that's just something to consider. They're the ones who recommended this, but if you have a different policy, it may be a joint work session with the Parking Advisory Board, something to think about.
Oh, that would be fabulous. I'd like to see that as soon as possible, so they can kind of help me understand some of the decisions. And I'm very much hoping the public will be notified by somebody in the city that parking at Hiawatha is the cheapest, so don't drive all around looking for something cheaper. I hope that's true, but we don't know, because there's been no disclosure. I'll have to read about it in K R D O someday. But I'd like to know what, you know, what's going on with parking. So I would really like to see that on our agenda sooner rather than later. I also would like an agenda item for us to discuss the agenda for our yet-to-be-scheduled retreat.
Okay, right, and I guess one wrinkle in that now is, you know, we were looking at trying to do it in May, and we're going to have to replace a city council member. Well, we will have to, obviously. Do we want to hold off and do the retreat after that, or do you want to do it before? So that deserves a little discussion, too.
And then also, I'm gone for two. My daughter's getting married in May, and I've got all these relatives coming in from around the country, so I'll be gone for, unavailable for like the last two weeks of May.
Okay, but you'll have a lot of extra food at your house? Is that what you're saying? All right.
But we're going up to Mount Princeton for part of it, and then we're going up to Denver, so if you want to come with us, you'll have to bring your own car, because there'll be a lot of bopping around. But yeah, so whenever it gets scheduled, when should we talk about that, John? And when should we talk about the timeline for putting out a request for applicants?
Well, yes, we've got several things here, so the, again, last time we did a, well, since we're on the topic, Bob Todd submitted his resignation was effective March or April first. The next council meeting was the seventh of April. We had a resolution, and that sort of set things officially in gear. We took applications until the twenty-ninth of April, and then we considered the applicants on the fifth, which was the first meeting afterwards. So basically, people had had three weeks and a day. They had to get things in on Wednesday, there's the applicants, and then we considered them the following Tuesday. And as it was, we had basically a runoff, so two weeks later on May the nineteenth, we selected Mr. Bremner. So that was kind of the timeline we had for that go-around. So it looks like we, the earliest we would have a, the candidates would be ready for selection, May the fourth through possibly May the eighteenth. We can kind of discuss that, so we've got, so really, we have several things. I'd like to get a vote on these items to see if we've got at least four council members who are interested in discussing these items. Do we have anything else before we get into voting on this? Okay, I guess not. So we have four things. The first would be consideration of the Sheep Mountain Trail requested by Mr. Bremner. Again, if we have four more, I'm happy to put it on the agenda. All in favor, show your hands, please. We have Mr. Bremner. Okay, so for now, we'll hold off on that. Park, discussion of parking in Hiawatha Gardens. All in favor? Show your hands. Okay, we have one, okay, so.
Oh, can I ask you something about that then, John, while we're on the topic? Just quick, quick.
Okay.
Am I allowed to, am I, would it be improper or a violation of some ethics? I really need to get answers, and I'm happy to do my own work to seek that out. Is it okay if I just contact the parking board and schedule some meetings to talk to some people there? And as long as there isn't more than one other council member present, then I'm okay. I just want to confirm that.
Mayor, can I respond?
Yes, Julie, Denise has a couple comments relative to that.
Counselor Wolf, probably the best thing to do is to reach out to Roy and Kevin, get, talk to them, and then you can attend one of the parking boards and go from there, parking board meetings. So if you don't mind just reaching out to Roy and Kevin, and then they will manage accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Julie, I think that'd give a, that'd be a good start. That'd get you a lot of background material, and then, and honestly, you know, at the moment, I kind of feel like we have so many things on our plate that I'm reluctant to add things to agendas.
I respect that. Agenda item that I wanted to discuss the agenda.
Right, right.
You want to hold off on that, too? Or can we take a look at that?
Soon, because I mean, it's a matter of trying to find a time for us all to get together and availability for a venue. The Garden of God's Trading Post was available. And I thought during, during all of May, I guess I was wrong on that, because I thought they'd be available the twenty-second. It turned out they weren't. So I guess we need to kind of see what our availabilities will all be. But again, there's the question, do we want to bring the new councilperson on board before we do that? I see a couple heads nod, you know, at the same time, I, you know, I think, you know, part of it was an opportunity to set some goals, things that we might be able to get done this year, so that's a factor as well. See a couple of hands out there. I think Mayor Protem was first, and then Counselor Chandler.
I was just gonna volunteer. There's another counselor who would like to work with me on developing an agenda and bring back a straw man to counsel on that. I would be willing to do that.
I think that's a great idea. Do we have another volunteer on that? Julie, would you like to do that?
I need to think about it.
Okay.
I'm not prepared. I'm not prepared to say yes or no today.
I'd be willing to work with you on that.
Okay, so we could have a, basically a subcommittee of Mayor Protem and Counselor Chandler to come up a straw man agenda and bring that back, and we could then consider that. Again. Okay, and then we'll also need to set up a schedule for the the applicant for the Ward One position. And that's, we have to do that. It's not like we're going to be voting as to whether or not it's going to go on the agenda. It will be. As I said, last year, we passed a resolution recognizing that Mr. Todd had resigned and kind of setting things into formal motion. I don't know that we necessarily would need to do that. We could, if we could come up with a deadline date for when those applications need to be in, that would give, give us a chance to start, start publicizing the vacancy. Last year, we, people had almost a month. We could entertain something like that. Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to suggest that we agree to use the same process as we used with Mr. Todd. I think it worked well, and the timings seemed to be good for it. So I would just do the same thing we did then in, in terms of timing. Now that, we may want to adjust it a little bit if, if it overlaps with when Counselor Wolf is gone, but that would be because, anyway, I just think we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Okay, good, good comments. Counselor Chandler, please.
I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Protem Fortune, and was just wondering if we can't get some dates tonight. So if we did a resolution on the 13th, and then look at our calendar now, is it possible to get a tentative framework now, so we can see how that fits into Counselor Wolf's plans to not be here? Would that be amenable to ever?
Mayor, just a reminder, the 13th is a work session?
Yeah.
Oh.
May 13th would be a work session, so we wouldn't be passing a resolution. I don't necessarily, yes, thanks. I don't know we necessarily need to have a resolution or that we, we would need to wait in order to announce the vacancy. It seems to me we could announce the vacancy, you know, as of tomorrow. And if we could set a date when the applications can be in, we can, we can do a resolution in the meantime. If that would seem reasonable. Counselor?
We wouldn't be able to get anything into the bulletin until next week.
Possibly. I see Jack Elders in the audience. We might be able to get, you know, the basic announcement in. So there's that. Let's see. Denise, please.
Judy, I'm wondering, would it be best that they just put this on the agenda for next week for the work session, or is it okay that they continue to discuss this? I don't know, I'm referring to you because it's not an agenda item for tonight.
It's not, but it's, it's basically figuring out a schedule. I don't see a policy type decision, it's more of a schedule, so that we can move forward and get this resolved.
Yeah, okay, that said, I guess Julie, what, when will you be absent? Julie?
I'm just looking here, and I could actually, I'm going to be absent in terms of Tuesdays. The 18th, you know, I could do the 11th. I guess I'm just going to be absent. I can, I can participate on the 11th, and I'll be gone on the 18th.
Okay, the 11th would normally be a work session. We could we could have it as a, we could call it as a special meeting so that we could address the, you know, the, the selection process if we needed to do that.
And I also wanted to agree with Nancy's suggestion. I'd like to see that we have a full 30 days worth of bulletin reporting on this vacancy. So that we can, because last time we got a really good cross-section of people to apply. But I, you know, I do think that the bulletin is key to part of our, you know, messaging on this, and so I'd hope that we can have a full 30 days of bulletin press releases, whether that can start this Friday or not, I don't know.
Mayor, if I can speak on that?
Yeah, Judy, Judy, you have the floor.
So we can probably pull the same information that we put out last time for Mr. Todd. And my understanding is if we can get that in tomorrow at noon, we should, it should come out on Thursday.
I think the odds are pretty good for that. So it would, it would appear that if that works, then we, the public would have notice on April the 8th. Judy, would you, I'm thinking if we, if we had a special meeting, instead of the work session on the 11th, we'd also have a special meeting so we could act, potentially act on the on backfilling Ward One, we could do it then. We have that meeting on the 18th, but Julie won't be here, so I think we, we kind of have to cross that date off.
We can certainly do that, where we add that special session on to the part of that work session, so that you can go ahead and take action. Or change it to just be a special session.
Okay. I guess I would, I would recommend having, because we have a meeting on the 11th, tentatively a work session. So what, we'd have, I'm thinking if we had May the, May the 5th, that'd be a Wednesday, that would give us chance, kind of a tight turnaround to get into the packet for the 11th, we could do that. So that would be announcing the vacancy, presumably on Thursday, when the bulletin comes out, that would be the 8th, and then we would take applications up to May the 5th. Does that seem reasonable to council?
Well, and Mayor, we could actually go to on May 7th.
Okay, May 7th, okay, we go to May 7th, okay. All right, so that's almost a month, April 8th to May 7th. Does that seem reasonable to council to, to say that the deadline would be close of business on May the 7th?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't see any opposition. Anybody opposed, raise your hand. Okay, so let's go ahead and say that the applicants would be, the applications would be due no later than May the 7th to close the business. Would that work for you, Judy?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and in between, we'll, we'll do the resolution and get that out. I don't think that's critical, but it seems like a good formality. So May the 7th, close the business. Okay, I think that probably covers that topic. So Counselor Chandler and Mayor Protem will get together and come up with a, you know, an initial agenda for the retreat. We'll have to figure out when we can do that as well. And again, it looked like there was support generally for the idea of not having a retreat until after we backfill council. Anybody opposed to to postponing the retreat until after we get the new council member in? Okay, I don't see any opposition to that. So let's go ahead and plan on doing the retreat after we get the Ward One position backfilled. Okay. Okay, I think we've completed the future agenda items. Let's go on to the City Administrator's report. Mr. Chaney?
Yes, we're looking for a Park and Rec Director. We're in the process. Hopefully, we'll have answer by next week, and a couple of parks. Employees will be going to the Beaver Summit and the Tree Care Class coming up in late April. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have several things. We, as of Monday, we had 115 responses to the survey that was sent out for the zoning update. I believe now we have maybe one council member who has completed that, so I would ask all council members, please go in and complete that survey. That would help us. Also, we're asking each council member to meet one-on-one, and you can either meet with Christine alone, the consultant alone, or both. So I believe a doodle poll was sent out. We would love for you to give it some time so that we can get you involved with the zoning update as we move forward. April 27th will be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and Commissioners and the Council on the zoning update. So lots of updates on that particular area. Also, want to let you know that on, a couple of quick things. On the 16th of April, we will be doing an open house at our Public Works facilities. It will be 12 to 2 and 6 to 8 p.m. So we'll be getting the information out about that, but that will be for all, open house for all residents and for elected officials to please come join us, see the, the great work that they've done out there. Park Avenue will be completed by May 15th, we're hoping. Cannon Avenue and Lover's Lane, they have postponed of when they're going to put the gas line in on that until October. And then Pawnee, Manitou Avenue and Ducklow, we're hoping by July 21st. And then the ADA sidewalk by the Clip House and the Post Office. It will be going May through July, but we'll be trying to keep it limited due to that being the tourist season. So just a couple of updates on projects.
Can you, Denise, can you say what's Park Avenue being completed? What's going to be completed on Park Avenue by May 15th?
The gas line that's being put in by CSU.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, so the last two items for tonight's agenda, call for executive sessions. I will go ahead and read those, then I'll have to ask for a motion to go into executive session. And there are two, technically two sessions, as I understand it. For Mr. Parker, we have two lawful reasons to go into executive session. I need to read them both, and we need to, my understanding is handle them sequentially, so. Item K1, an executive session to discuss personnel matters regarding an employee or an applicant, unless the employer applicant requests an open meeting pursuant to Section 5.1A of the Manitou Springs Home Rule Charter concerning the management and oversight of the Police Department by the City Administrator and Acting Police Chief. The second item, an executive session to consider documents protected by the mandatory non-disclosure provisions of the Open Records Act, which is currently located at Part Two of Article 72 of Title 24 of the Colorado Revised Statutes, which may be amended from time to time pursuant to Section 5.1F of the Manitou Springs Home Rule Charter concerning an employment-related investigation report. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
And will we go into executive? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The motion by Mayor Protem, followed by a motion from Counselor Chandler, which I'll take as a second. All in favor, show of hands, please say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we will leave this Zoom session from the email that Judy sent out earlier today. We've got an executive session. So let's
Mayor, may we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, I was actually going to suggest 10, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, 10, okay, so I've got 8:35. Let's, let's be back here at, at a quarter to nine then. Okay, thank you. We'll see you on Zoom.